So you can be in two places at once. We have a little piggy.
Good evening and welcome to another evening of our Select Board meeting dated June 25th in the year 2024. I want to welcome everybody here. It's great to see everyone. Our first order of business is our public comment. I will take comments from anyone on any topic that is not on the agenda, and you will have two minutes to speak.
I just wanted to come in. Linda Hathaway, this is Stowe Town Board for anybody who's watching who's not aware. I just wanted to give you a little update of upcoming stuff for election. We're getting ready for the state primary, and these wonderful little vote by mail cards are going to be sent out again to, starting the second week in July, the Secretary of the Commonwealth is sending them out to everyone who hasn't already picked September primary. So you're going to get a lot of cards. I have only 1,260 people who have requested them so far. So, and some members of the family have registered and some haven't. So some people are going to get cards and some are not. So I'm trying to tell people, go on the Secretary's website, track my ballot, and see if you've registered or who registered in your family, and then send a card. That will save you from calling my office and saying, well, my husband got a card and I didn't. Why didn't I get that? So, just thinking of that ahead of time. And the primary is going to have Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, Governor's Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, and I'm not sure whether it's Register of Prograte or Register of Deeds, I've got to clarify that. But I'll be back to see you guys to have to sign the warrant later in July or August, whenever I get it ready.
Great.
Yeah, so we're gearing up. We've had a couple of weeks of quiet time. Now the crazy, busy time will go. Thank you.
Thank you, and as always, thank you for your hard work and your staff and volunteers.
I have a lot of helpers, and we have a lot of volunteers and election workers that are going to come in and help us label all those ballots that we're mailing out. So check our website. We have a lot of information there. So it's pretty informative, and we'll keep it up to date and put things in. So if you have, anybody has any questions, certainly call us or email us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Any hands up? Anything? I do not see any. So we'll move on to Board member comments. Hector.
Just to note the passing of Daisy Dearborn, who died on June 15th at 97 years old. I know I'll miss her. This will be my first time. She lived two doors down from me, and this will be my first time going back after a Select Board meeting, and I won't hear comments about how we did, or ideas and things like that. So she will sorely be missed.
Okay. Town Administrator's Report. Denise.
Thank you. First, I would like to recognize our Procurement and Grants Administrator, Ashley Pennard, who just obtained another grant for Stowe. I haven't even told Arnie this yet. We got the two grants for the EV charging stations, one for the community center and one for Stowe Community Park. So it was about $84,000 in total for the two chargers. There will be one station with two ports at each location, and we will now work on putting out the procurement to get those installed. So it's a great job. She really spearheaded that initiative.
That's great.
There will be a groundbreaking ceremony for the library project on Wednesday, July 10th at 5:00 PM on Common Road. We have parking available. I did speak to the church, so parking is available at the church, as well as town building, the former fire station, Hartley Road. We don't expect it to be a long ceremony, but we do want to recognize the accomplishment of where we are. I would like to remind folks that we do have the Mark Shuttle available for anyone needing a ride to and from Stowe and within a 20-mile radius. In the initial five weeks of this newly revised program, there have been 71 trips booked through Stowe. Now, if it's a round trip, that counts as two trips, but they were very optimistic at the number of rides that were being offered. So it's great. I encourage people to take advantage of it. The information is on our website. It's in our newsletter, and can be found going through either the Council on Aging or contacting us. If you have gently used clothing, shoes, bedspreads, curtains, purses, or other soft goods, you can donate them to the Council on Aging, which will then be used to help the seniors in Stowe. For unusable textiles, you can use the recycling bin located in the parking lot of the community center. So we would like to remind folks that if you have clothing or soft materials that are in good condition, you just don't have a need for it, it's a different size, whatever, we would encourage donating it through the Council on Aging for recycled use to repurpose it for our seniors. The Climate Resilience Master Plan for the Stowe Acres North Course is expected to be wrapped up this week, and will be posted on our website site in early July. We would like to thank everyone that participated in that process through all of the outreach, the in-person meetings, the surveys. It is a very in-depth plan, and we're actually very excited at the way it's coming to finalization. It'll be a lot of good information that we hope folks take the time to read through and sort of digest before we start talking about how to start implementing parts of that plan. There will be no discussions with Denise for July, as I am taking next week off and normally skip the month of July anyways. They will resume again in August, and the town offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the Independence Day holiday. That's it for tonight.
Okay, well, thanks. Okay, we have appointments. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to appoint Leslie Fulford to the Open Space Committee for the remainder of a three-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Leslie, for being willing to do this.
Yes.
Indeed.
Yes, Denise.
So Leslie is available. She's very excited to join the Open Space Committee. She did attend their June meeting, and was even more excited about participating after that meeting. The committee is excited to have her come on board and looks forward to her participation, provided that you all make the appointment this evening.
Leslie, is there anything you would like to add?
Yes, yeah, I'm excited. I'm excited to be involved more with the town of Stowe, and especially within a committee that is, their goal is to work on preserving open space, which is something that I feel passionate about. And so I'm just happy to be here and excited for the future.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your willingness. We are indebted to you for your volunteerism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. So moved unanimously.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's great news.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is sign the annual warrant for animal control. I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, in accordance with Chapter 140, Section 151A of the Massachusetts General Laws, I move to approve the annual animal control warrant dated June 25th, 2024, and effective for one year from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and to authorize the chair to sign it on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Yes.
So the language that we have in our package, is that state mandated language?
Yes.
Because it just was a little harsh, and I'm just wondering if there's anything we can say about that. It was also poorly written. So in addition to being poorly written and harsh, gave me pause. So I guess there's not much we can do about it at this point.
No, I mean, I can certainly look to see if we can adjust that, or what other towns are using, if they're using the standard language. I'll be completely honest, in my prior community, we never did this. We never adopted this on an annual basis. So it is something that is under the law for animal control, but perhaps we can offer an abridged version for our purposes.
I would like, Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend that we do that. This language is too open and too harsh. Just killing a dog. Just kill it. You know, I think we need to amend that.
Okay, are you asking for an amendment?
Now, or is it something you need to do some research on?
I would need to do some research on. So I would respectfully ask if you approve it for the year, and we can work on it for next year's warrant.
Okay. Yeah, because it's just badly, commas in the wrong place. Yeah, anyway, so just kill it.
I'd be happy to chime in on the same point of view.
Just kill it. Just kill it. All right. Then, have you called the motion? Not yet.
I have not. Any further discussion?
So this is pretty much what she signed when she was working at Boxborough?
This is the same warrant the town has approved based on the statute. Yes.
I didn't notice it last time.
Yes. Yes, in the past, you've done, when you sign this, you have also signed the intermutual agreement with Boxborough. We obviously no longer have that. She's coming on board as a direct employee, but we still have to do the warrant for her services.
Well, that just brings this language to the forefront where we can really see how much we don't like it.
Right.
Any further discussion? I'll just make the comment that I agree with everything that was actually said, and I agree with you. I took pause with it, but realized it is what it is.
You gotta speak truth to power, bud.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It is unanimous. And I'll take a motion on the ban renewal for lower village traffic improvements.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and sign the ban renewal for the lower village traffic improvements.
Second.
Any discussion?
What does ban stand for?
Bond anticipation note.
Thank you. Didn't see it anywhere. I was trying to figure out what we were banning.
That's a whole other topic.
It's just considered short-term notes versus long-term borrowing.
Okay.
And this is, as it says, lower village. We've rolled this over a few years, so we make a payment every year and then roll it over until it's paid off completely.
Do we know what the payoff date is?
So this is just an annual ban, so we would have to re-borrow it next year. Every year, we decide if we want to pay more down, but it's just easier to continue. I think it was a, I think this one was a 10-year ban, but I have to double check. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Comments?
No.
Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The record shows unanimous. Okay, we are now to the Green Advisory Committee, the Climate Action Plan Approval. I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Climate Action Plan from the Green Advisory Committee.
Do I get to second it, or do I have to?
You can.
Second. Wasn't sure if I needed to recuse myself.
There's no conflict.
Okay. Okay, at this point in time, I think it makes sense for the folks that are sitting here. Well, I guess, Arnie, you're it. To, I understand you have a presentation?
Yes, I have a short presentation.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So before I begin the presentation, there was a question that got brought up by the Board last month when I presented the Climate Leaders Program about when we would make our application. I mentioned at that time, there were two dates. One was the end of July, the other was the end of December, and that if we were to include the schools, which is what we were recommending, we couldn't apply, including the schools, until the end of the year. I've had discussions with the Town Administrator about this. I don't know if she has informed you.
No, we have not met since.
Okay. So in response to that question, I went back and forth with the Green Communities. They had not had such a request, but there was a letter from the Green Communities Division just last week saying that they would have actually only, not two dates for submission of an application for climate leaders this year, but only one, and that would be the end of the year. So that sort of, I think settles the matter. So our plan now is to, before the end of the year, have everything ready for an application to be designated as a climate leader, including the schools, and that's, I think, where we need to be. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that positive update, and gives you a little more time for you guys to work with the schools.
It was going to be tight, but.
Yes.
All right. So on the Stowe Climate Action Plan, so what the motion that you made is what we're hoping that you will approve after this presentation. Before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge the members of the Green Advisory Committee, the many residents and members of town government who contributed to the Climate Action Plan. I'd like to particularly acknowledge our Town Administrator for her support. Denise has met with us regularly since the committee was formed, and her thoughtful consideration and advice has helped shape the plan. So with that, go to the next, yeah. So the Climate, the Green Advisory Committee was formed after a new landmark climate law was passed in the state called the Roadmap Law, which established greenhouse gas emissions targets for the state through 2050. And the main, or one of the main charters for the Green Advisory Committee when it was formed was to align the town of Stowe with those statewide emissions targets. And the Climate Action Plan that we have presented in your packet is intended to do that, and you probably have noted that our focus has been on the 2030 target for the state. Our belief was that trying to have an actionable plan beyond 2030 was sort of a little premature, and that 2030 was a near enough term goal to do some real planning.
You meant 2050 was a little premature?
2015. Actually, the state has goals every five years through 2050, and 2050 is the date at which the state has legislated that it will achieve what's called net zero emissions, which means that any residual emissions from buildings, vehicles, agriculture would be offset by pulling carbon from the atmosphere, primarily through land use. So on that slide, you can see the main sectors that we're focusing on, which are the main areas of either emissions or sequestration, and we've also included adaptation and resilience in the Climate Action Plan. The next slide, please. So just to, when we thought about what our goal for the Climate Action Plan was, we said what we really wanted it to be was both informative and accessible. And by that we meant that if we are to achieve these targets, it has to be a town-wide endeavor. If, as you've seen in the Climate Action Plan, the majority of our emissions are from homes and private vehicles, so all the residents in Stowe need to be engaged and to participate. So what we did is to try to make the plan as accessible as possible. We included a number of graphics, pie charts, and what we were calling climate snapshots, which we were really focusing on the town. For example, we had a climate snapshot for Lake Boone, some information on how we get to work, information on how energy is used in our homes, which we hope will be informative and engaging for residents of Stowe. Next slide, please. So this is a graph showing where we were in 2017 and where our target is for 2030 in terms of our emissions target. So 2017 might seem like a strange date. This was, came out as a result of a greenhouse gas inventory that was done with the support of MAPC. At the date it was done, the latest data that was available was 2017, so that has become our baseline. And the way that we got to what our 2030 targets were was by looking at what the state emissions were in 2017, what their targets were statewide for 2030, and then aligning that rate of reduction from 2017 to 2030 for the town of Stowe. So as you can see, it's a very significant target. Overall, it's an emissions reduction of about a third from 2017 to 2030, pretty well equally distributed between the two major sectors for emissions, which are buildings and vehicles. The other point I'd like to make here is that we also did some investigation, or quite a bit actually, in an area known as carbon sequestration, which comes from our town lands, much of it forest, but open other meadows and other lands as well. We have actually included an appendix to the Climate Action Plan, which shows how we derived our estimate. But overall, we found that about a quarter of our baseline emissions, though shown on the left for 2017, are offset by our current sequestration rate. So as our emissions reduce in the coming years, and if we can at least keep that rate of pulling carbon from the atmosphere at the same level it is today, that percentage of offset will increase. So we did look at it and found that we'd have to reduce townwide emissions by, I think it was 77%, assuming sequestration stays at the same level to achieve our goal of net zero. Next slide. So this is actually a cut and paste from the state's Climate Action Plan, showing what their top-level strategies are. And the top-level strategy for Stowe is similar. So, you know, starting from the left, end use energy. So what, the primary focus of the Climate Action Plan is transition from the use of fossil fuels to electricity, and primarily, we're talking about our buildings and vehicles. So that's going to be one of our primary targets, and, you know, we've already made some significant progress in that arena. The next area to the right is energy efficiency. What the focus there is, not only do we want to transition from CO2 emitting fossil fuels, but we want to have our use of energy be as low as possible, and in particular, in our buildings. And that means that we have to make our buildings envelopes much more efficient than they are today. We adopted the Specialized Energy Code at town meeting, which is going to make that the case for all our new construction. And the Select Board has adopted a policy for new and renovated municipal buildings. We have more of a challenge with our existing homes, but, you know, we think that as overtime, that can be addressed. The next major sector is decarbonizing the energy supply. So as you can imagine, as we transition from fossil fuels to electricity, our demand for electricity is going to go up. We anticipate it's going to go up if we hit our targets for 2030 by somewhere between around 20%, 23%. And as probably I've already mentioned, the electricity we get from Hudson Light and Power is already extremely clean, meaning low carbon emissions by state standards. And what the challenge is for our electricity going forward is, you know, can we maintain this clean electricity, you know, while the demand goes up and keep it affordable and keep it reliable? And we'll be getting our electricity from Hudson Light and Power. We also will be getting distributed energy from solar, as we'll speak to. And finally, we've already spoken to this area of carbon sequestration, and Stowe is fortunate to have, you know, both protected land that's heavily forested and land that isn't formally protected that also has a significant amount of forest cover. And as I mentioned earlier, we estimate that our current sequestration rate is equivalent to about a quarter of our current emissions. Next slide, please. So this is the, how we've organized the Climate Action Plan. We have the introductory sections, which speak to sort of townwide and cross-cutting issues like what's the local impact of climate change, what's our community profile, and we do speak to what the overall strategy in townwide emissions are. Then we go into what we call sector outlines. For each of the sectors that I mentioned earlier, which are buildings, transportation, energy, what's called natural solutions, and adaptation and resilience, we have a sector outline, which has, covers the areas shown in the bullets in that middle section of the slide. And then the final part of the plan is what's called sector action plans. So in the sector outlines, what we do at the end is we identify what we call priority actions, and for each of those priority actions in the sector action plan, we expand that to talk, speak to how that priority action can actually be implemented, and we include the bulleted items in that lower part of the chart. The one thing I'd like to mention here is, we did, in terms of accessibility of the plan, we focused on the introductory sections and the sector outlines. It was our view, or our belief, that many residents, and we hope most residents who access and read the plan, will, you know, be interested in the introductory sections and the sector outlines. That's where we put most of our graphics, our climate snapshots, our pie charts, to make that as accessible as possible. The last section of the Climate Action Plan, these so-called action plans, are more in-depth, and we felt that most members of town government, most residents, would only get into that part of the plan if they were particularly interested in a particular sector. So the focus for accessibility to the plan was on that, those first two parts of the Climate Action Plan. Next slide. Next slide. So if the, if the board does adopt the Climate Action Plan, then going forward, we're going to change gears and move into a sort of an implementation phase, where I've listed the, you know, some of the main things that we will do. We'll be doing oversight and collaboration with other town committees and departments, with town volunteer groups and town residents. We're, believe we'll have some focused initiatives, as well as ongoing ways to engage the town. And we need to be tracking our progress. And so our thought is, and what we want to present to you tonight, is that on an annual basis, we would come before the Select Board and provide you with an update of how we're doing in Stowe, how the state is doing overall, whether or not we think we need to go back to the plan and make any updates from what we initially thought would be the case, and then carry on from there. So finally, we did include two appendices in the Climate Action Plan. One is on detailed results of the climate survey that we took, had, I think, 311, if I remember that number correctly, responses to the survey. And that appendix includes pretty much all of the data that we got, as well as some analysis of that data. And we have a second appendix, which I think I mentioned earlier, which speaks to how we came up with our estimate for sequestration in town. We, we felt that those two appendices would not be referenced by many residents in town. If we included them as part of the Climate Action Plan itself, it would make the document a little bit unwieldy. So what our plan is, is if the Climate Action Plan itself is adopted, and the Select Board supports the two appendices, they would be put on a page on the town website as separate documents. So there would be the Climate Action Plan, which would be what you had in your packet, and then you could reference through separate links those two appendices. And I think that was all I had in my presentation, so. Hope to hear your questions and comments.
First of all, I truly, truly want to thank everyone for their incredible diligence and hard work. But I really want to sincerely, well, Arnie, I know the immense amount of time, hours, and effort that you devoted into this, and it shows in this plan, it really does. The clarity that is within it and what it presents, I would be hard-pressed to find that anywhere else. And I sincerely mean that, so I, I have the utmost gratitude to, to you in admiration. I've been involved in things like this in the past, and yes, I do know what it takes to do a stellar job, and that's exactly what you've done. So I truly thank you for that. I guess I'll lead off with my first question, and that is, what can we as a board help in the implementation process? And how we can help to get it out to our existing homeowners? Because from the plan, as I understand, and from what I read, as I went through it, that is the largest sector, followed then by transportation, and a lot of that, again, is the private homeowner with their vehicles. So it's a two-pronged issue that we're dealing with. So is there anything we can specifically do to assist in that process if the, if we adopt the plan?
Well, I think, and first of all, thank you for the kind comments about the Climate Action Plan, it's certainly a shared endeavor. The, the, I wanted to say, the Select Board has been extremely supportive of, you know, the Green Advisory Committee, the Specialized Energy Code, the policy for municipal buildings. And, you know, that is very much appreciative. We will be, and this new Climate Leaders Program that we've just been talking about. And, you know, without the support of the Select Board on these various initiatives, we wouldn't be where we are today. And going forward, I expect we'll be coming to the Select Board fairly frequently, asking for your support for other town initiatives. And as you pointed out, it is going to take the town as a whole to make this happen. And you'll be hearing shortly from Sharon on a, on a new website that's just been launched, that we think will be part of the way that we, you know, keep the residents of the town engaged. And what we would, you know, what I think what the committee and what I would like to, to hope is that we can continue to come to the board and ask for your support on these types of initiatives. And if they make sense to you, that, that we would get your support. And, and again, I just want to thank you for the support you've been giving us as we've been, as we've been moving along this pathway.
Support has been well-deserved. Other comments from anyone? Go ahead.
Okay, I have several. To answer your question, I think one of the things that the Select Board could do is when you come up with specific implementation for action plans, or action plan implementation, that we may need to discuss some of that in our budget work. So I would suggest that, I think, I was very impressed with the plan. Obviously, my interest is natural environment, and I was, your forest discussion was good, your agricultural soils is critical, and you've, the language in the, in the plan right now is vague enough that, over the time, the implementation can be more specific as to how to plow, how to leave things fallow, how to get organics back in there, so that you've got the sequestration going on. I think one thing that, in terms of the building, that I had a question about was a lack of solar panel support from Hudson Light and Power. So, and I noticed that in that Climate Action Plan, you talk about some of the solar fields that are in Stowe, and the Stowe Hudson Line, which we all are aware of. And so I know that's something that's going to have to evolve, but I'd just like your feedback on that, yeah.
Sure. So as, as you point out, there are two utility-scale solar fields in, in Stowe, one on the Laney Street, one on the old town dump.
Town dump.
Town landfill, I guess, better word.
It was a dump.
On the, on the border of Hudson and Stowe. But we, we also actually have 115 rooftop solar installations in town, which is a surprisingly large number. Maybe not surprising, but, but we do have a significant number. But you're, you're right in that Stowe being served by Hudson Light and Power, which is what's called a municipal light plant, operates under a different set of rules than the larger investor-owned utilities like Eversource and National Grid. So they do allow solar installations, and one of the things, I'm going to give a plug to Energize Stowe here, because you'll see that in a minute. One of the actions within that Energize Stowe is installing rooftop solar. And I think you'll find a fairly detailed explanation about what it takes and what the incentives are for rooftop solar in Stowe, which is important for folks to know it, because it is different in Stowe than it is in neighboring communities that are served primarily by Eversource and National Grid. You know, one of the big differences, a couple that I'll just point out, and this is true of all municipal light plants in the Commonwealth, there's 40 of them, that you are not allowed, for example, to have a leasing arrangement. You have to purchase the, your solar, rooftop solar. You don't have what's called net metering, where any excess generation from your rooftop solar would be fed back to the grid, and the utility would pay retail for that excess solar. That's a, that's a good financial advantage. And the, so the, the incentives, although, on the other hand, just to, to keep in mind, there is a, actually a very good rebate available from Hudson Light and Power. I think it's $1.50 a watt, up to 25 kilowatts from Hudson Light and Power. And that, that's, that's reasonably significant. They, and you also, as any other resident in Massachusetts, can now take advantage of the federal tax credit, which would be 30% of the cost of the installation. So all in all, you know, looking at the financials for rooftop solar, I mean, it's, you know, I'd have to say, in terms of payback period, it's not as quick as it would be in investor-owned utility area. That's in part because electricity is so much more expensive.
Yes.
So that you, you get, your payback period is, is, is shorter. But, you know, also given that, I think Hudson Light and Power, as you point out, could do a better job. And as we were saying, when we were just coming up the stairs, as of this month, Hudson Light and Power has a new general manager, and he's reached out to me. He wants to reach out to town government, town residents.
Meeting set up.
Okay. And, you know, I think, I'm, I'm very optimistic that he's going to be, you know, very supportive of whatever he can do to, you know, support things like residential solar, you know, you know, at the same time, he wants to make sure that the rates that we enjoy currently, you know, don't, you know, increase significantly. So that's a trade-off that he has to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I too would echo what has been said. I've only been on the Green Advisory Committee for a year, so my contribution was minimal. The amount of work that everybody that's on the committee put into this was, has been amazing, and people that were on the committee in the past, but especially to you, Arnie, for your leadership, because none of this would have happened without you being the leader, and encouraging and motivating, and your tenacity to chase down facts that nobody would even thought existed in programs and things like that. It's truly amazing, and I've been very impressed in the whole year where I offered some grammatical corrections, and that was about it for the, for the plan. But reading the whole plan was amazing to me that we had something like that, and thank you.
Thank you.
I feel pretty lucky to live in a community that has so many folks that are, that care about our environment, as well as our, you know, our individual well-being, and, and I, so I also echo gratitude for all your hard work and, and thoughtful application to make, to, to help the whole town do something really important that I think is important because I, I believe that our natural environment is crucial to our well-being, and could be the future of the planet, who knows? So, so thank you. I also, I don't know if this is an appropriate question at the moment, but regarding, and maybe this will be, again, under the, the website that you're going to introduce, in terms of, of homes getting an energy audit, something that would describe how, how much, how much CO2 they produce, and, and how inefficient, or how efficient some things are and not others, so I don't know a lot about those audits, and whether that's easy to do, and if you could say a few words.
So, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. You may know that for a number of years, Hudson Light and Power offered a, you know, free home energy audit, but it didn't go into the type of depth that you alluded to. One of the things we've already touched on with the new general manager is to have a more comprehensive energy audit. One of the things that isn't covered currently with the energy audit is how well your, your existing home would be suited to retrofit to a heat pump, or what changes you might need to make, to make that change from either fuel oil or natural gas to heat pump. And we think that the, you know, the new general manager, there is already consultants in place who would do that, that would become part of the energy audit. One other thing that I'm aware of is that there is federal funding that will become available to municipal light plants either by the end of this year or early next year, which will both increase rebates, but also require a energy audit, and at least as it's currently worded, require that any measures that are taken, or that some of the measures that are taken, reduce home energy use by a minimum of 20% to qualify for the audit. So that's going to drive some fairly significant measures for the homeowner if they want to qualify for the rebate. So, you know, we're hoping, we're actually working with the state to sort of shape that plan, and we're expecting it to be rolled out, you know, either by the end of this year or early 2025. And that will both provide some additional rebates to residents of municipal light plants, provide, we think, low-cost financing, and have this additional requirement that, that the measures that are supported, you know, do really reduce household energy use.
That's great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Before we vote on it, I do have one question, procedural question. I heard two asks here. One was to separate the appendices from the Climate Action Plan and just approve the plan without the appendices, and then approve having the appendices on the website. Does it matter, or will the motion still cover it?
Yeah, so you actually don't need to approve putting the appendices on the website. As long as you approve the plan, it'll all be uploaded individually.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Sure.
To, to answer your question about how the Select Board could help, so this is a question for you guys. Would it help if the Select Board helped you prioritize some of the actions, or is that something that you guys would just do? I mean, that's just, you don't even have to answer. It's just like, whatever we can do to help, but I mean, we can help prioritize more, you know, but I guess we would do that through funding and stuff like that.
Thank you for putting that question out there. I don't know how we could engage in a discussion about that priority. Maybe the town administrator has some thoughts about that.
So, I mean, I think a couple of things. Arnie and I are going to talk, I don't remember if it was July, I think it's July, on the Green Advisory Committee as a whole. They're down a few members. I think we're going to talk about, perhaps coming back to this board, about redefining either their role or their membership. I, I think as part of that conversation, we can start talking about what the Green Advisory Committee priorities are, and then we can have that same conversation in ways that, you know, if the board has a particular priority, then we could certainly bump that up. We can talk about including that into budgetary discussions or what's needed. I, I do see it as a collaborative. I do see it as a collaborative discussion between the board and the Green Advisory Committee. But I think, I think we need to sort of retool the committee a little bit so that they have enough members to actively participate and start working on the implementation.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, I would add to that, sometimes the priorities are driven by opportunities.
Exactly.
So if some funding program comes up, that's going to, you know, get some priority to it off. Some set of volunteers show up that are hot on some particular thing, that'll probably get some priority. So, I mean, that's a factor in, I think, you know, the committee hasn't really talked about it yet, but that's what we've done in the past when things have, trying to figure out what to do.
And as an example, I'm excited to hear about the
Yeah, for example.
The charging stations and the ability to take advantage of, you know, the state programs that are in place to do that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, something like that, we could certainly apply for it, again, if we identify additional locations or if we meet the climate leader status. I think there'll be additional opportunities for grant funding that, you know, we can certainly look to see what's out there. The state, as you all know, the state is very big on the green initiatives. They're putting a lot of money and investing a lot of grant opportunities. So it's just a matter of figuring out what we can do, what we have, you know, the capacity for, and just prioritize them to get going on, you know, a path forward.
So thank you all again for putting us in a position where we can take advantage of those or deal ourselves.
The comments. See none? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. The record shows unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and now we're going to get a really exciting demonstration and launch of the Energize Stowe website. You're on.
Well, this is very exciting, and my only challenge is to make sure that... Okay. And here we go. So, there's Energize Stowe. So what you're going to want to do, when the simple, you get it to it by simply typing Energize Stowe. And you'll probably, it will come up Google and you can just type into it. The first thing that people want to do is sign in. Rick Lent has already signed in and has already created an account. But on this far, if you can move the talking, yeah. On the, this right here is going to have a green button to do that. The whole focus of Energize Stowe is to make it really easy for residents to get into it and to start recording what they have done to improve their home efficiency and their energy. So on the homepage, what you see is you have four buttons here. You have a welcome page, which talks about it. You have a take action page, which I'm going to show you. And then you have events. So any campaign we have, anything like the library series that we've been doing for Climate Talks, we will have it on that. And there's a calendar. And then we can highlight specific actions. So let's go, and you also can take a tour. If you go, let's see.
Sharon, can you say a few words about where this came from and the whole?
It's in their packet, but I, so I didn't want to go through the slides. I just wanted to show, but as you know, it came from Mass Energize. There's about twenty-four towns that have already used this. Acton is one of them. Concord, of course, Littleton, others, have really created their own site to make it for their way. And the Mass Energize has become a very large organization now. It used to be just focused on Massachusetts. It's now really branching out to around the state. So you can also access any of these up here. But if you go to About Us, the story, we'll take a look at it, is the same as a welcome. So this talks about it. This is a joint effort between Sustainable Stowe and Green Advisory Committee. And then it tells you how to use this site. So that's the homepage. So let's go to actions. So here are all the actions that individuals can take. And they can say either they want to do that, or it's been done, or they just want information. So let's talk, Insulate Your Home would also be talking, but we can take any one. Let me just take this and then I'll have you say which one you would like to look at. So let's look at heat pumps. So this is a rough approximation of what the impact would be in terms of sequester, eliminating CO2 and how much it costs. So we know that some heat pump installations could be huge, but some can be more minimum. If you're only putting one cassette in, you know, it's not going to cost that much. So that was an average. So if you look down here, this is just a general description of what this action is. It's not supposed to be a real detail. It's just supposed to be an overview to give somebody some information if they want more. So, talks a little about how a heat pump works, just to give them some idea. Then, what are the steps? I'm interested, maybe I'll take a look at this. So what are the steps? This walks you through what are the steps that you would want, should think about doing if you were really considering doing, using a heat pump, which was best for you. You want to assess some information, schedule an appointment, look for heat pump contractors, and it just walks you right through. Now say you're still not sure. You need, you're like Arnie, who needs a lot of detailed information. You know, he wants to get right down to those facts. So let's take a deep dive. And here, you've got some real additional information. You can get to a website that can get you more information. It's a link that you can get out. You can always link out to that. It tells you about the available incentives and tax rebates. Well, you know, people like to know about testimonials, right? What do other people think? Well, we can put testimonials on this site. And look, we've just got a new testimonial. Cheap, efficient heating and cooling. Boy, that sounds interesting. So let's read more. So here you have a neighbor who's actually done, he did geothermal heating, thought it was fabulous, and gave you a lot of information about that. Even how his savings are, detailed in information. And this is from a resident. So each one of these actions have the same list. So let's go back, I'm just going back. Is there any other action that you particularly would be interested in looking at? We have insulate, switch to LEDs. One of the reasons we can't some of these smaller ones is because we had some feedback from people who reviewed the site that, you know, I'm not going to be able to put solar or do any of those things. What can I do, who's maybe a renter or something like that, something like that? So we have compost, eat plant-based diet, install a heat pump water heater, rain barrels, Sustainable Stowe had a rain barrel campaign, start ecological landscaping, switch to electric lawn mowers, drive an electric vehicle, recycling, six Rs of waste management, induction cooking, join the pollinator garden pathway, invest like a climate activist, and our Sustainable Stowe library talks. Also, a to-do is to join Energize Stowe or join Sustainable Stowe. So what would you like to look at? Anything?
Solar for me.
Solar? Okay, let's see, let's go. Did I just pass it?
It's at the top, yes.
Yeah, it's at the top, it's at the top.
There we go.
Second one there.
Okay. So here's primary, general description. Here's some steps to take. So you've got to determine if your roof's good for it, if it's south-facing or not. And also, there's a, there should be something here that, and will happen is that check with Hudson Light and Power because they may have some special recommendations, specific with the, about how your roof is and that type of thing. Taking your deep dive, is my roof good for solar? Sort of like a question. Orientation and shading. Age of your roof, critically important. And here's where we talk about Hudson Light and Power. Because they'll have very specific requirements for you to get that rebate. And we have the financials here. Again, another link that you could go outside. So I am suggesting that the select board, each one of you can sign into store and save an account. The other thing you can do is we can also create teams. How about a select board as a team? So if you have a team, right now we have Sustainable Stowe, there are five members. We also have Boxborough Road. The one member who's in Boxborough Road hasn't recruited his neighbors yet. So that could be a little healthy competition, you know? Select boards, you know?
I like it.
So if we go to events, let me, upcoming events. So I can, we can share on this site events that happen outside of Stowe. So I've chosen two Acton events that our neighbor, our residents might be interested in attending. And what happens is when you have an account, you will get a notification by email. These might be events you'd be interested in. So I just got my notification that these were two events coming in. Here's a link at the past events that we had. And that also mentions about this library series that we've conducted. When we have campaigns, we can campaign on it, and we have a calendar view.
If you go back to Teams, you'll see a select board's been created. I've been logged into this and I haven't played around with it.
Okay, so if I go on here, I have to find the select board team?
If you go to Teams, you'll find the select board team.
But all you do is you set up your account and just decide you want to join that team. So one thing is, under actions, you can go testimonials. And you'll have a list of all the testimonials. But you can also sort testimonials by category. So you said Ingrbor, you want to, we're interested in solar. You've got one testimonial right there. And then I'm sure we probably have another one. Just want to refresh it. It's, no, that was heat pumps. Okay, I could also check another. I could do transportation, waste cycling, any of that if we got testimonials for that. Or you could search for a testimonial. So, one thing I did want to show you, okay, my profile. So Rick Lent has completed sixteen actions and two actions to do. He has four point three metric tons of carbon. Now, that is a rough approximation. We need to work with the people at Mass Energize because of Hudson Light and Power primarily being nuclear, this calculation is not really reflective. But you can also check, what about trees?
Oh, nice.
Seventy point five.
Okay. So it's the equivalent of planting that many trees?
Yep.
Okay.
And there are others. So Rick joined, just joined Energize Stowe. But if you want to join some others, you can join your teams. He's a member of the Sustainable Stowe team. So, and you can see what he's completed and what he needs to do. So that's his look at that. You can have preferences. So how often do you want to edit your, add any password, change your communication? How often do you want to be communicated with us, et cetera? So that's Energize Stowe. We had a, sent it out, did a library presentation on it. We have had some hands-on demonstrations. And then in August, September, when we really push the Climate Action Plan, we will be co-launching both of these together. Because if you looked at the action plan, a number of things mentioned Energize Stowe as a way of engaging the residents to come there. Any questions?
Oh, that's great.
Very nice.
Yeah, excellent.
I can't wait to go on it.
It's friendly, it feels like.
It feels fun.
Yeah, it feels fun.
It does.
Good job.
Yeah, and so we also, we have some local administrators. So we can add our special actions if we want, or we can share actions with other groups that are in there, or we can get actions from them. And there's a bunch of ways that we can customize it to make it good for Stowe.
And so the thing about it is, once we've launched it, right now we have eighteen actions there. But we may be putting more actions in, sort of retiring some actions, that type of thing. So this is really a dynamic. And once we start having campaigns, certainly in relation to the climate action implementation, we'll use Energize Stowe as a way of starting to promote that. Because hopefully, and one of the things I did want to mention on this, on the, here, we have two goals. Now, we don't have that third goal ring, which is carbon because of this issue that we need to work on for that. But we have a goal of getting a hundred and fifty households to sign into this. Now, that shouldn't be too hard, but we've just got to get them to know about it. And we want them to do three hundred actions. So as we get more people signed in, you start seeing how we can get completed to the goal around that. And then we can look at what our impact is on that.
And folks can read about it in our July newsletter.
There we go.
Well, thank you. That's
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, again, for all of the work and everything. And I think, I think that this is something that I can see folks really getting involved with and with Team Select Board. Maybe a little competition here or there. Could happen. And just all sorts of fun things to go along with the educational aspect of it. And I really do think it really does have some real value. The only other comment that I wanted to make through the whole process is, which I didn't see, is in the engagement aspect, have you ever considered engaging with high school kids? You know, it's always good to start younger.
Funny you should mention that. We have just met with the regional coordinator. I think her environmental coordinator?
Yes, I think so.
Is that her title? Kendra, Candace. And talking about that next year, we will do a Cooler Climate Fair. And talking about that next year, we will do a Cooler Climate Fair with the high school. Now, when we talked to the superintendent before about it, he insisted that we needed to involve all three towns. So it took us a while before we could get to, because of changing in staff and that type of thing. So we just met with her. And so she's getting to know about the date for next year. We are going to apply for grants. We'll be working with the Green Advisory Committee for funding. And we're going to need to talk to Denise about it. Because one of the grants, the Cooler Client, Cooler Communities Grants, gives the money to the towns. So, and we need to now, we also need to work with, once the date's established, need to work with finding who we can work with at the, each of the towns. And we're probably going to be working with the PTOs of each of the towns to get them involved. We've also talked to Hale School. We did a mini workshop on planting native plants. And it was Kurt, Kurt, right? For Hale and Monica and Diddy, who's the garden, leads the garden club. And Monica leads the environmental club. And they both were very excited about it. And we could probably do another type of workshop. And we talked to them about a cooler climate. So they're on board about getting the kids involved with doing that. So the Cooler Climate Fair is a, Concord had one, towns all around us have had, is primarily driven by the schools, by the kids. And it's educational. And usually, they will have displays and things like that. And we'll probably, this will be our first year. And if it's a big success, we'll have it a second year. And one thing was talked about that for location, suggested center. So again, we need to work on that. But funny you should ask about that.
Thank you. I'm really, really excited to hear about that. You're including our younger residents in our population.
I'll tell you, there was one kid in Hale. And boy, did he know his native plants. Oh, my gosh.
Well, that's great. Again, thank you.
It all starts with poison ivy.
Isn't that funny? It is native.
Good to know what it is, right?
But I do want to thank you for coming tonight and for spending the time with us. And going through the action plan, but also this new website. I, I think it's a really exciting venture. And I really look forward to the achievements as they develop and happen. And continued collaboration with you all in making our town greener and safer in general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Thank you all. Thank you.
We have a presentation of the Housing Production Plan. Valerie and Michael Slagel and Planning Department.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Come on up front, Valerie.
Thanks. So while, while Michael pulls up the, the presentation, we're here to discuss the Housing Production Plan, our 2024 update. So the purpose of the discussion tonight is really just to provide an overview of the contents of that plan. So we'll be coming back to you to look for adoption next month at some time. All right, next slide. So this is just a brief overview of what we'll talk about. So first off, what is a housing production plan? We'll go into the housing needs assessment findings, talk about our goals, housing development constraints and opportunities. And then we'll end with our recommendations. So many people went into the creation of this plan. For those on Zoom, I'm Valerie Ortiz, I'm the planning director. I'm joined on Zoom by Michael Slagel, our land use planner. And we've also gotten project management support and technical expertise and peer review work from consultants at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So on Zoom is Gloria Wong-Poo, our community engagement specialist, and Casey Williams, who's a regional housing and land use planner. We also had a steering committee that provided support on this plan. Members of the Housing Trust and also the Housing Authority. So Mike Kapczynski, Maureen Crawford, and Kathy Leonard. We also had housing ambassadors assist us with this plan. So these are Stowe residents who are renters. We found that renters are just a demographic that are a little harder for us to get at. So they've assisted us with kind of the on-the-ground community engagement and getting the word out about our forums and surveys and other opportunities throughout the plan. So that's Tracy Winslow, who's a newly elected member of the Housing Trust, or Housing Authority, and Melissa Emery as well. All right. So what is a housing production plan? So this is essentially a five-year strategic plan that's required by the state that allows towns to set out a framework for how we're going to achieve our specific housing goals. So this plan isn't new to Stowe. We've had two previous updates. But this one is building off of the 2016 plan. So it's an outline of our work for the next five years. So it sets us up to begin future processes. So again, just laying the, the framework of how we wish to move forward. And the work that went into the creation of this plan included community engagement, the technical expertise and peer review from MAPC, computer-based analyses of parcels in town, review of other town plans to, to review our alignment with them. And I really want to emphasize that the plan is really a synthesis of what we found through this process on a more general level. So the creation or the adoption of this plan does not create specific change in and of itself. It's really setting out the work that we will do in the future. So more community engagement to come. And the audience of this plan, the reader, is really a Stowe resident or anyone who staffs a board or is on a board or committee that's, that's listed in that, the recommendations. So these are the components of a housing production plan, essentially our table of contents. A couple of these are new in the 2016 update. So that is the current housing toolkit, the future development opportunities, and the affordable housing production targets. So we'll talk a little more about this tonight. But the inclusion of the future development opportunities has been called out a bit in our comment period. So this is a discussion of locations, of parcels in town, that we would encourage either implementing existing zoning or beginning a community process to review what new kinds of zoning allowances we might want to consider for those locations. So it is new that we are calling out specific parcels. But really, we're looking, we're looking at having future community engagement around those. So this is really just the preliminary assessment of those. And then the, the recommendations portion includes specific action items. It sounds a little like the Climate Action Plan. They're assigned a lead entity, assigned a priority. Most frequently, you'll see mention of the planning board and the housing trust or planning staff. The select board is also mentioned in about four of them, I believe. So we can also talk about those. So moving on to our timeline of how we created this plan. So we've been working collaboratively on this for the last year. Meeting with our consultants about every other week and with our steering committee at key milestones. So we began by confirming a community engagement plan, conducting a stakeholder analysis, and convening the steering committee. In the fall, we held our first forum. We released the public survey and began drafting our housing needs assessments and our housing goals. In the winter and early spring, we held the focus groups with key demographics, so seniors, parents, and renters. We also held a second forum and began drafting our implementation strategies. So we're now in the final phase here with a full draft of the Housing Production Plan available and looking to have the select board and planning board adopt those, this plan in the next month. So I'll turn this over to Michael to jump into our housing needs assessment.
All right, thank you, Valerie. So I will take you through the housing needs assessment, which goes over multiple data sources that show the housing needs and desires of residents in Stowe. This takes a past look, a current look, and a future look at Stowe. And some of the data sources that we used in order to see how Stowe has changed, where we are now, and where we're projected to be in the future, come from the census and the American Community Survey. We also used data from HUD, which is at the federal level, and the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. As Valerie mentioned, there's a lot of community engagement throughout this process. And that really helped tie everything together and create additional context for this plan. And then to show where Stowe is, we used, in terms of housing, we have context communities, which we compare their trends to our trends, how they've developed, and where we're headed in the long run. So in our housing needs assessment, one of the first things we looked at was demographics. And on this slide, we talk about a few of the key demographics that show certain needs based off of what the demographic is. So we're seeing that Stowe is having a growing population. And a lot of that growth is coming from older or senior residents. In terms of households, we're seeing that households are decreasing in size. So fewer people are living in each individual house. Stowe has eight percent of residents that identify as having some sort of disability. And this is a little bit higher than other context communities that we looked at. And in terms of income, we're seeing that the, the average household in Stowe has been increasing in their annual income. Next, in the housing needs assessment, it's important to look at the housing stock and market. And what we're seeing overall with our trends is that most households in Stowe are single-family. They're quite large in size. And most of them contain at least three bedrooms. A lot of people think that Stowe is very historic in its housing. But we've actually seen that a lot of the houses that were built in Stowe are within the last two or so decades. Tenure talks about who, if you live in your house or if you rent the house. And in Stowe, most of them are owner-occupied. And we're seeing that sales prices have been increasing and have gotten quite steep in the last few years. And Stowe has a relatively high monthly ownership cost compared to other similar context communities. And then just one other point that we called out is that there's not many rental units in Stowe, and less than fifteen percent of all households in Stowe are rental units. A large part of a housing production plan is to look into affordability and cost burdenedness. So cost burden means that a household is paying more than one-third of its annual, or of its income on housing. And we're seeing that twenty-six percent of households in Stowe are considered cost-burdened. Which means that they're paying more than that thirty percent of their income towards housing. And the population most likely to be cost-burdened are renters. As I mentioned earlier, Stowe has a very high income. But we're, we also have a population that is considered low-income. And that's roughly one in five households. In terms of affordable housing, our stock that we have, there's only one hundred and fifty-six affordable units in Stowe. Yet, five hundred households are eligible based on their income for affordable housing. So we're seeing a pretty significant gap. And on the regular housing market, we're seeing that a household must earn $216,000 in order to live comfortably in Stowe, which is about $68,000 more than what the true median income is. I'm going to pass it back to Valerie to go over a little bit more of our community engagement during our housing needs assessment.
All right, so to summarize the community engagement, we've divided it here into three different categories. So our public forums, the community surveys, and the focus groups. The forum, the first forum looked into our research into the changing demographics and the housing needs that Michael was just reviewing. And then the second one really focused on goals and strategies. The survey that we conducted gathered just under two hundred responses from Stowe residents. And those questions were based on preferences regarding affordable housing, types of housing, and potential locations for housing. In total, between the three focus groups with seniors, parents, and renters, we had thirteen participants join us for these ninety-minute in-depth sessions. The focus groups covered challenges in finding, keeping, and maintaining housing. And then throughout all of this, we had the assistance of the, the two housing ambassadors, as I described earlier. So in the next few slides, I'll give kind of a broad overview of, of what we heard and what residents are hoping for. So first is better support for aging in place and low or fixed-income housing and local workforce housing. So the quote here was, and this is just one example quote. So low-income housing doesn't seem to be the focus. Senior housing is very expensive and comes with large monthly fees. Next, residents were looking to locate housing near existing services and infrastructure. And when we dove into that a little bit more, what they mean by services is municipal services, like the library, the council on aging, recreation opportunities, or shops, medical offices. And infrastructure, it really did mean sidewalks. So where is our existing sidewalk network? The quotes here, "The longer we stay in Stowe, the more I just want to walk places. I have to drive to places to walk. And I want to run errands without needing to drive." So residents were also looking for us to encourage traditional neighborhood-style developments. So very highly walkable neighborhoods that are typically more densely clustered. And also to diversify housing types. So the request here was more two- and three-bedroom rentals are needed. And I wish Stowe was a bit more embracing of townhouse living. We also heard the call to improve municipal processes for home modifications, especially for clean energy modifications, and also for accessing permitting information in general. So someone said, "I don't think someone thought about how to retire in this home. Now that we know more about accessibility, it's not just older adults, it's a little scary." And then lastly, we just wanted to call out the need to align with other existing Stowe plans and policies. So again, you know, we hear this all the time from surveys, but we heard it again this year, this desire for the rural, small-town feel of Stowe and the interest in conserving open space. A quote here was that "we should consider a Stowe Acres-style development near Acton, too." So this, this all gets into how we created our goals. So really, again, from, from the community engagement, from the GIS analysis that Michael will, will describe in a moment. But we came up with these four goals, and they're quite similar to what we saw in 2016 as well. But as I read these, you'll, you'll notice that they are overarching, broad goals. So the plan does further define them by objectives, strategy, action steps. So the first is to increase the supply of uppercase A, so deed-restricted affordable housing. Second is to diversify types of housing available, especially smaller homes. The third is to utilize creative zoning and incentives to locate new development in suitable areas of town. And lastly, to clarify and simplify municipal processes for residents to make alterations. So I'll turn it to Michael for a description of our GIS analysis.
So now that we have our goals, we need to see what's preventing us currently from reaching those goals. So we did a constraint analysis to see what's. So we did um constraint analysis to see what's restricting um the production of housing in Stowe. Um, and we have three main categories: natural and physical constraints, infrastructure, and zoning. Um, so natural and physical constraints can be things such as wetlands, um, or uh the topography of a site. Um, the infrastructure is things such as water. Since Stowe doesn't have um a municipal water supply, large areas of land need to be dedicated solely for the um production of drinking water. And then our zoning um restricts what type of uses can be in certain areas. So only certain parcels in Stowe, um primarily in the residential district, are able to accommodate housing. So this crazy map on the screen shows a lot of the constraints that we have in Stowe. Um, these are separated out layer by layer throughout the plan, so you can look back and see what each of these symbols mean. But the areas in bright green are the areas that are um showing as um possible for the production of housing. Um, this takes us into our opportunity analysis. Um, we did two main forms of analyses and tied community engagement into both of um into the end to fully synthesize our results. So the first was the GIS analysis, which was a computer-based approach. Um, this looked at the different parcels within Stowe and looked at the attributes that each of them had. Uh, we next reviewed some town plans and policies to see where um those plans called for more housing, if they did. And if they said, "Let's not develop these areas where we should avoid um adding more housing." Um, and then community engagement was also tied into some of the locations um based on our input that we heard from focus groups, the surveys, um, and the uh forums. Um, so I'll first take you through some of the housing types we are looking to consider. Um, we identify six broad categories of housing. Um, some of these are currently existing in Stowe already. Some of them might be in one or two places. Uh, but these are what uh the opportunities, the community engagement have uh brought to us. And these include cottages and bungalows, accessory apartments, duplexes and triplexes, townhouses, neighborhood-scale multifamily, and mixed-use developments. So with our analyses, um, as Valerie mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, um, we had to identify some areas of Stowe where we would be open to exploring um the addition of addition of more housing. Um, so one of the areas that we heard, um, and that popped up in our analyses was Lower Village. Um, we also heard having Gleesondale Village, um, since that has some existing infrastructure um and has a neighborhood feel to it. Uh, we also heard for access to the South Acton train station, so parcels around there could be suitable. Um, one of the really large parcels in town that has um some development opportunity is located off of Gates Lane. Um, that could be done through the production of smaller houses like cottages and bungalows and done through a planned conservation development. And then overarching throughout Stowe, we could see the addition of accessory apartments, duplexes, and these small cottages and bungalows. Uh, so these are just areas to explore. Um, so there's no guarantee that anything will happen here. But this plan is setting us forward in how um conversations can uh move forward to see if these are suitable for additional housing. Uh, I'll pass it back to Valerie to go over some of the strategies to achieve our goals and vision.
Um, so the housing production plan outlines eleven strategies to try to meet these goals. So we understand there's a lot in here, and we likely won't get to everything in the five-year term of the plan, um, but it does set out and a vicious roadmap. Um, so as you you read through the plan, you'll notice that each of the strategies tries to take a bite out of multiple goals. Um, and we've divided them here into four different categories. So zoning, housing development strategies, municipal processes, and capacity building, community education, and engagement. So briefly, just go over them. So the zoning strategies um are to review existing zoning bylaws, consider any byright allowances or conditional zoning, to review and update zoning bylaws, to encourage the creation of diverse housing opportunities, and compliance with MBTA communities. So you all, I know, are aware of MBTA communities. There may be someone Zoom who have not heard about the three A, this new law um in Massachusetts. Um, but it's a new tool that guides towns toward the um creation of a zoning district um that would allow for the creation of multifamily housing. So given Stowe's size and proximity to the South Acton commuter rail station, we'll need to identify a location in town um that can have a density of housing at fifteen units per acre. So this plan does not set out exactly how we will comply, but it simply says we will have a process. And these are some steps that can help us get to compliance. Um, but the plan itself does not commit us to specifics there. Um, it's really just gonna be handled, zoning process, as any other of the planning board goes through. We have three housing development strategies: um identify sites for affordable housing development, consideration of expanded infrastructure, and um expediting energy and accessibility renovation permitting. A couple of different municipal process strategies, um aligning board rules and regs and policies with affordable housing goals. Except for the select board's comprehensive permit policy, these are all planning board um policies or rules and regs. To develop resources for renters, homeowners, and property owners, and to preserve existing affordable housing. And then lastly, the community education and engagement strategies um to build local awareness of affordable and fair housing needs in Stowe, and to boost participation in available assistance programs and to provide additional opportunities. So ahead of um getting to any questions and discussion, um, I do just want to call attention to the memo that was provided to the board in the packets. Um, we kind of outlined the different comments that we've heard during our comment period and how we're looking to um to address those comments in our final draft of the plan. So tonight, if there are any questions or suggestions on how we're looking to address those comments, that'd be great to hear, or if there are any um questions on the broader plan as well, that would be um more than welcome.
That's right.
Um, I'll start right out with one of the comments that uh came from the Conservation Commission. Uh, under goals and objectives, objective one point two, it stated is to remove policy, regulation, and zoning barriers to affordable housing. And there was a concern about the language. So my question is, would it still work to remove the word "regulation", which it seems to me is the one that specifically speaks to the Wetlands Protection Act?
So um with with this comment, so the the draft housing production plan does include a list of the specific policies and regulations that we're looking to change. Um, so so in fact, n- none of them are conservation policies. So I don't believe there's any um edit or revision that needs to be made to the plan based on that. Um, I think that the plan is transparent in which um policies or rules and regs that it's calling out.
Okay, I would, I guess my thought is that if this language is in there, even though you're specifically saying we're going to change these things, that it could be misread by someone to have this more general
Yeah.
uh meaning and
We could definitely take a look at how it's introduced. Um uh, but in in speaking further with conservation, it sounds as though it's a large plan, and there's, there's an, there's another point that better describes it. So we can take a look at the um the objective language and and see if there's something that we could add to say, you know, refer to
Right.
this other section of the plan that describes exactly which policies we're talking about. Um, but we, so we can take a look at it.
Good enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just what you're pointing out is um for the purposes of clarification, I think, more than anything else. And I think adding that in will definitely do that if it prefers them to the section of the actual regulations themselves. I, that's, I think, a recommendation I would strongly endorse.
Um, being one of two members that are also on the comprehensive plan, how do these two relate?
Oh, yes. Um, so it's, I think it's great timing that we have an update to this while we're still in a comprehensive plan process. Um, so once this is adopted, we will be sharing this, of course, with the consultants so that they can understand what the goals are that came out of our community engagement process and make sure that the new comprehensive plan is going to align with this housing production plan. So this is more of a strategic plan, whereas the comprehensive plan is is comprehensive and a little bit more more broad in its recommendations. So um typically, a comprehensive plan would refer back to something like a housing production plan for for some of those um implementation measures. Um, one unique thing that's gonna be coming up in our comprehensive plan process is really trying to look at what our core themes are going to be. So a typical um master plan off the shelf might have a chapter on housing, where this HPP could essentially be inserted into it. Our new comprehensive plan is going to have, instead of discrete chapters on sections, really looking at what the value is around housing, or how it might relate to economic development or conservation, to make sure that there is a little bit more um of a systems-based approach to those recommendations. Um, so they're going to be um helping us connect housing better to those other chapters.
Okay.
Excellent. So basically, they're gonna be the guideposts for action plans that are moving forward in the future, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Correctly.
So that stays within the four corners.
There you go.
Excellent.
Yes.
So we've got two huge developments in the works, and are are those, are, is the housing production plan, any of the proposed guidelines or implementation actions going? Is it feasible for those actions to be applied to some of those? I mean, I know Stowe Acres is having, I don't know if it's fifteen units per acre, but damn, that's a lot of units. An acre, but in any event
Yeah.
um means more than two stories, probably, but, and then we've got the one on Hudson Road, and then Gates Lane you've identified, but um, are we able to apply some of the goals to current proposals?
Yes, you're asking if I'm reading into it correctly specifically about MBTA communities and
Well, no, I wasn't asking specifically. I was just asking, I think, maybe I should preface my comments more. I think this is great. I think I like the goals, the purpose, um, and what you are trying to implement. I fully support that, and I know that this has to be approved, and then there are probably changes that have to go through town meeting and all that stuff. But to the degree that we've got these two proposals sort of in various stages of permitting, um, will any of those, these two proposals, meet some of the goals or push some of them forward? I guess that's how I'm, what I'm asking.
I would say definitely. So, um, so a couple of things. Um, with the developments that we have in the pipeline or under construction, we will, in the short term, meet our ten percent on our subsidized housing inventory, which of course is a goal. Um, of course, that number can fluctuate throughout the year, so it's always important to make sure that we're continuing to produce um affordable, deed-restricted affordable housing consistently. Um, but it does help us meet that that goal. Um, I would also say that town boards and departments have done a a good job working with the developers um of those two developments to make sure that there is a diverse diversity of housing needs that are addressed by those plans. So with um the cottages at Wandering Pond off Athens Street, looking at um smaller-scale housing, age-targeted housing, um, and with the residents at Stowe Acres, you know, rental opportunities, cottages, multifamily. Um, so, so yes, those those do help us. Um, you know, we we are able to apply some of those goals because I don't, I don't think many of these goals are very new to Stowe. This is all just building off of all of our past community engagement. Um, so it's great that we're able to look to um developments that are under permitting now and say, "Yeah, this kind of lines up with what we're hearing that residents want." Um, but certainly, when we look at future developments um in town, we would be trying to to shape those also with the developer.
Is one, is one of those areas, when Michael put up the plan with the different areas,
Yeah.
I don't think Lower Village was on there as a potential multi, was it?
It was, yes, yes. So, so we do call out Lower Village, um, trying to encourage mixed-use developments being created there, but also in the areas surrounding Lower Village, knowing that residents want to live somewhere where they can just walk to a store.
Right.
Um, or walk to um to trails, to a good trail network. Um, so, so we are looking at that area as well.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
That's all I had. Thank you.
One more question. What's accessory housing?
So, um, we currently do have accessory apartments that are allowed in Stowe. Um, there are, it's, it's, looks like conditional zoning in a way because there are so many, you know, if, if your house is um uh dated nineteen ninety or earlier than this set of regulations, if it's after, it's this other, and so we have this allowance for um for s- for units that are seven hundred square feet gross. So that's taking a look at the outside of the building. Um, which, interesting to have the climate action plan in front of us because we have heard from residents that it's restrictive if you want to have um additional insulation. Um, so, so we're looking at clarifying what is currently allowed through that bylaw and making, considering through an upcoming, if possible, public process around um what the community would be supportive of, whether it's detached, attached. Could we increase that square footage to have it a little larger? Uh, we know that some folks want to have two-story accessory apartments, so
So we're talking like in-law apartments?
Exactly, yeah, granny flats, in-law apartments, um ADUs, all the same thing. Yeah.
Any other questions at this point? And we will look forward to uh next month. Thank you very much
Sure.
again for the monumental work that you all have put into this.
Thank you.
Um, and again, it really does show an um a grudge of appreciation um for your efforts to bring this forward and to keep this moving forward um in the process and combining it with the comprehensive as well. Not the easiest task in the world. Uh, so great job and kudos.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say, we, we didn't do it without you, so.
And we had, we had a good team behind us, too, so, thank you.
Fantastic.
Pass that on.
Alright.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, um, is the Stowe House of Pizza uh update and extension, so I'll take a motion on that, please.
I move to approve the extension of the common victueller license for Stowe House of Pizza through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, um, Denise, uh, it is my understanding that they have met all the requirements through the planning department?
Yes, correct.
Um, and actually above and beyond.
They have been working diligently to make sure that they meet all the requirements. Um, Valerie is satisfied. Um, I'm copied on all the correspondence, and they are in compliance um with the exception of just filing their plan at the registry. So, um, I am recommending you approve it through the rest of the year.
Okay.
Great.
Any other comments, questions?
Nope. Good for them for doing the work.
Yes. Um, I will take a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But the record shows unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks Valerie.
Thank you very much, Valerie. Um, and next, disposition of surplus goods, which is the two thousand and six Ford Ranger to be sold in parts. Not suitable for road use. I'll take a motion on that, please. not suitable for road use. I'll take a motion on that, please.
I move to declare as surplus a two thousand six Ford Ranger belonging to the town but not suitable for road use, valued at less than ten thousand dollars and to be sold for parts, and further to authorize the disposal of this surplus item.
Second.
Discussion?
So, who's gonna sell it for parts?
We have a site called Munisabid that we can put municipal equipment and whatnot on.
It's an usual site.
Yeah, or we could actually just sell it for salvage to a metal scrapyard or whatnot. The frame is completely rotted out and we are, the expect, they would not issue an inspection sticker in twenty twenty-three. So, it has been primarily off the road, just sitting at the back of the community center waiting to be disposed of.
Call the vote.
Okay.
Wow, let's go home.
Then. I guess I'll ask for an expeditions vote at this point.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
And the last thing.
Can you just declare that unanimous, please, for the?
Uh, yes, that vote was taken unanimous.
For the folks at home. Thank you.
So, last thing.
I'm gonna last. Hard to last.
I was going to bring up, as far as what was put on the agenda, is the summer meeting schedule. I would like to propose that we not meet our next meeting, so everybody gets a break.
No, no.
Or we do meet our next meeting.
You were meeting on July ninth.
Yes, on July ninth, sorry, and.
Skip the July twenty-third.
Yes, and skip the July twenty-third meeting. And then to meet the first session in August and the second session, rather than a regular meeting, to have it as a work session for us, rather than a formalized agenda, to really kind of look at what our goals are, what the goals would be set forth for our administrator and do it at that time, rather than putting an extra meeting in.
So moved. Second.
May I just add, so obviously, this would be with the caveat that if we need to have a meeting, if business comes up, that we can't push off, then we would have to schedule a meeting.
Are you asking for a discussion?
Um, well, I'm looking first for a motion.
He moved it, I seconded it.
Okay, discussion?
I.
Aye.
Oh, no, I, I, not A Y E. I am concerned about not meeting on a regular schedule for purposes of business, conducting business. So, I guess I'm not in favor of that, but I do very much encourage a working session. But that's just one vote here, bud, so, you know, you got some others.
I would add that if, if the town administrator is comfortable with your proposed schedule, that I'm happy to go along with that.
And as amended, if business comes up that we can't avoid, we do have a meeting anyway.
That's just a little loose, in my opinion, you know, it's like, if something comes up, then Denise has to organize us as opposed to being able to say, we're meeting on da-da-da, we'll deal with it then, right? So, I'm just, this is me, I, I'm one of those people that, I understand the intent personally. I'd love to not work at night, but I'm just concerned, so I guess I defer to staff.
Well, and also, there is precedent because the Bolton Select Board actually, they meet at the beginning of July and then they don't meet again until the end of August.
Do we want to be?
Their work schedule might be different.
Taking about six weeks off. I felt that that was not.
It's a good discussion to have.
Yes. I, I felt that that was a bit too lengthy.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, um, I can say this in really rude way, but I won't. I'll just say it's a little entitled to assume that things aren't moving forward in July and August. But, that's.
Well, things do slow down over the summer, just by nature of summer.
I don't know, we've got this report coming up next month, you know, you know, and I, I just, I'm just raising my concerns, so.
Yeah, make a counterproposal to the motion that I seconded.
You'd like to amend the move.
Possibly, or we can deal with that in a minute. The other approach would be to agree that we could schedule our meetings as usual and cancel if there's nothing that of note or.
I could buy that.
No, you can't do that under open meeting laws.
No, no, you can do that under open meeting law. It's too difficult for us planning purposes. So, if we're gonna have a meeting, then we're gonna put stuff on it. But if we don't have a meeting, right now, we're sort of putting things on August thirteenth and July ninth after the chair and I met to sort of talk about the possibility of this. But if we have a meeting scheduled, there will be stuff on it because small stuff will continue to come up and at that point, I wouldn't wanna just push it off.
So, I guess my question then is, is it, is it too stressful to, to get rid of a meeting or two? And, you know, is it kind of a pain in the neck for, for the office?
Um, no, I mean, it's honestly, office-wise, it helps us a little bit. People are taking vacations in the summer. Quite honestly, the chair is not here, the second meeting in July, which means this clerk would need to be the acting chair. You know, our staff, Phoebe's out like two weeks. I mean, it's just, so staffing-wise, it probably would help us a little bit to not have that meeting.
Well, then, then I will.
But, I mean, not to, not to the point that it's any issue. It's just, it'd be like, oh, okay, well, we don't have to plan for these two weeks of what we're meeting. I fully expect that if something comes up, and it's not, you know, we've talked to folks that have events coming up just to give them a heads up of what potentially might be. So, you'll see at our next meeting, we have three upcoming event permits that cover, that we've had, that cover up through Labor Day. You know, we don't, with the charter changes, it's not as imperative that you meet for appointments for staff because I now appoint a lot of the staff members versus the department heads. You know, if we needed to have you all appoint the staff as you had been, then we would need to make sure we have a meeting because then we don't wanna push that off. I do fully expect that we will need a meeting, likely an executive session, to discuss some personnel matters in the upcoming time. But as far as regular business, it does definitely slow down in the summer months. So, I, I mean, it's fine, we're here anyways. So, it's fine for us, it's just, I will tell you, I heard from a couple of other communities after I put this together and really, everyone in our proximity drops down to one meeting in July and one meeting in August. It's different schedules, some move it and meet, meet the middle of the month versus the beginning or the end. Bolton does the sort of early July and end of August. They've all said, though, if business comes up, we schedule a meeting, so. I'm fine either way, it's just, it's come up, actually, you and I talked about it at one point when you were chair, it came up when Megan was chair. It's just, you know, to accommodate if people are traveling or vacations or just summer schedules of, you know, everyone having sort of a, a life outside of here, so. So, we're fine either way, and rest assured that if there is something, we would absolutely schedule a meeting.
Motion stands.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good discussion.
So, that was the ninth of July and the thirteenth of August?
Yes.
And the twenty-seventh for the work session of August, so August twenty-seventh would be your work session.
And I will not be here on July ninth.
Okay.
Ooh, so you'll be missing quite a few.
I know.
You have all July off.
All right.
No, well, I then have the other Tuesday nights, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think everybody else, everyone else is here, right, on that meeting? Because there's a couple of hot topics on that night, so. The rest of you are here, July ninth?
I have to be here. Great.
Meeting minutes?
I was in here, but it looked good.
Uh, ditto that.
I'll, can I get a motion, please?
Move to accept the minutes of the June eleventh meeting in Britain.
Second.
Okay. Yes, I reviewed them as well and they looked fine. Okay, so then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record show it's unanimous. Okay. Board correspondence and updates. Any comments on correspondence?
So, this is the second letter we've seen about things going on over at the Town Beach area.
It's the same household.
Looks like the same.
Oh, it's the same household, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's the same letter.
Okay.
And that's gonna be.
That is on July ninth agenda.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And audit looks great. I have no idea what it says, but it looks great. Okay, sounds like we're doing good.
If, it may, I'm sorry, may I just add on that? So, since I've been here, this is the first time we've received communication from the Nishoba Regional Audit Committee member, so I just applaud Maureen for taking the time to send communication to you and I shared it with the Finance Committee members. Because it is the first communication on the audit and how it's been going. So, I just thought that was great.
I appreciate it, yeah, and I, and it looks like they maybe are gonna take some steps to, to just do, you know, some things systematically differently. Looks great. Um, I just wanted to, and I see Kate is, is still here in some fashion and I just wanted to bring up Kate's concern about the cooling centers and ask about it. About, uh, it's, I guess I realized that I don't remember whether we do anything at Pompo throughout the heat of the summer or whether it's.
So, I, I think the difficulty, I mean, quite honestly, a lot of the surrounding towns, it's, you know, the fire department or the fire department staff, the cooling centers, you know, we don't have a full-time fire department. There was a holiday that fell on one of the days. We had nobody. I mean, quite frankly, it was a ghost town around here. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't, but we don't have an active MRC anymore. You know, that would normally be the volunteer committee that would come forward to establish things like that. The fire chief has been working to change the MRC to, uh, it's another acronym that has a little bit different overview, but still at the same, um, still handles sort of the same community-type things, and to have them be a little bit more engaged in town, I guess, emergency management topics, but it, it's a more broad, it covers a more broad area. That just hasn't got up and running yet, but that potentially would be a future. You know, I think that obviously, the difficulty is, we have, you know, obviously, we have very dedicated employees. When the buildings are open, anyone is welcome to come in as a cooling center. I think Maynard used their police dispatch lobby. You know, certainly, we could put that out. It's not really a welcoming spot for someone to come in and cool off, but we just, unfortunately, we don't have, we don't have these sort of volunteer groups that would jump up and say, and, and with employees, it's, you know, they're off for a holiday or, you know, at four o'clock, people wanna go home, unfortunately. So, it's just difficult to kind of coordinate those things.
We have stuff like library hours, which are a little later than the, than the workday in the rest of the building here, so that would be a cool place that.
Absolutely. I think if it wasn't the holiday in the middle of the week, it would be a little bit different, but that was the hottest day of the week, was the day that was a holiday.
Is there, um, I realize this is gonna be a long conversation. Is there any way that, that you might wanna say just a couple of words in the newsletter that if people wanted to cool off, they could go to the library and read the newspaper for a little while, or, I mean, maybe the, or just maybe because it is a town space that we.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm not sure we have room, but I'm happy to rearrange some things to fit something in.
I mean.
I mean, I think quite honestly, again, if we're open, people come here anyways. I mean, they come here, they hang out at the community center, they go to the library. We didn't put anything formal out. Again, the, the holiday kind of threw a wrench in accessibility.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm, I'm satisfied. Don't have to rearrange your newsletter.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm sure we can fit it in. Joyce's, Joyce's amassed it with rearranging the pages, so, I'm sure we can find a little spot.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, updates. This was originally put in for updates for the different committees that were involved in. I can start if you would like, as far as capital planning goes. Last meeting we had was before our annual town meeting. We presented our information. We don't meet again for a few months, and I will let you know as far as that goes and what may arise from it. Town Hall Reuse Committee, we had our first meeting actually last month. And we set our parameters for the, for the committee. Right now, we're in the process of reviewing what information was derived from the previous committees that were put together and also reaching out to other committees as far as what they're doing with their town halls. So, that's what's going on with mine. Ingleport, you have Complete Streets.
Yes, Complete Streets has had a vicious problem with gourms. We are scheduled to meet on the seventeenth or this coming month, so we can only hope.
Okay. Hector, you're on a couple of committees, one is obviously Green Advisory.
We're done.
Great job.
Actually, our next meeting is this Thursday. Arnie did also host a thank you barbecue over the weekend for all the people that were involved, present and past. Unfortunately, I put it into my calendar wrong as this Saturday, so I missed it. But, the, we are meeting Thursday. One of the main goals is to make sure that the graphic designer who designed the book had a chance to look at the plan, a lot of work into, went into just, not just the information, but the design of the book. And it looks beautiful and we need to make sure that designer gets paid this fiscal year.
Yes.
And I know that there's also some discussion about possibly revamping the Green Advisory Committee due to having a hard time finding people to fill the slots, so maybe shrinking it a bit.
Okay. You're also on the MBTA Advisory Committee.
There's a train that goes by in action. And that's all I know. They keep having meetings and the meetings are during the workday and I usually have work meetings. And they seldom involve us. They've had, from what I've seen of the meeting notes and the correspondence, they're not talking too much about the MBTA communities issue. They did have a meeting I wish I had gone to with the head of the MBTA, I forget his nickname.
Bang?
Yeah.
Richard Bang?
Which I would have loved to have heard because there's a lot of challenges obviously going on with the MBTA, but aside from things that really affect the town of Stowe, there's not much going on in the MBTA Committee.
Okay. Courtney, Local Access Channel Advisory Committee?
Yeah, meet somewhat regularly on, uh, moments when there is a funding request, so recently Jonathan asked, Jonathan Daisy asked for cameras to set up in center school so that town meeting can be filmed in a way that is a better setup for Stowe TV, there won't be wires on the floor. It'll be better quality and I believe all the funding for that is, is covered by the payments that the two contractors, Verizon and Comcast make to the town, they get from the user fees. So, there's a fair budget there for, for improvements to equipment and so forth. Stowe TV was also one of the sponsors of the, and it was their idea, I think, to, to have the Shakespeare in the park that we recently had, so now looking at another opportunity, maybe to do something in town hall over the winter. Maybe another Shakespeare event or see what, what they can find. Um.
Great.
Um, and the Affordable Housing Trust.
Smart, yes, from smart.
Smart, which I didn't see a reappointment to that last meeting, but maybe there's a different schedule for that. Um, anyway, um, the Affordable Housing Trust is working on an R F P and a um land um disposal agreement for the parcel on um off of Reddick Road that was acquired some number of years ago now by the town for the purpose of six units of affordable housing. And it, it turns out for us volunteer folk that there's a lot involved in creating a really good R F P and um the 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 challenge is that we'll wanna have control of the project, but not so much that no developer's gonna be interested. And um also navigating how to have the C P A funding that's been secured from town meeting um available to pay invoices on a building project, which is a little different than some of the other things, uh maybe it's the magnitude um than some of the other projects that um have have been C P A funded. So um just a lot of head scratching and gnashing of gnashing of teeth to get through development of the R F P to a point where we really feel comfortable, because once we put it out there, we're either gonna get people that wanna do what we said, or we're gonna get nobody. I don't know which is more daunting, so. We meet uh monthly pretty much, um sometimes more often.
Great, well, thank you all for your hard work on those committees.
Do you have an update on the comprehensive plan?
I don't have an update on the comprehensive plan, do you?
I'm on it.
Well.
We're uh, well, both uh Courtney and I are on it and we finished the gathering of data and opinions and concerns from the town folks and even people outside of town. Um, the consultant, Jane Golson, has compiled it all. I'm gonna be meeting next week to go over what has been reviewed and start working on the framework for the upcoming comprehensive plan. What do we want it to, if we have a vision of where we want it to go and what our impressions have been about what we've heard so far from the town folk.
Do you, do you guys feel like you got a pretty good response?
We had set a goal of getting.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, which was like fif-
Must have been more than that.
Twelve hundred um responses and we got thirteen hundred.
Wow.
I think your numbers are off, but but we got, we exceeded our goal.
It was over a thousand.
Ambitious goal.
Yeah, it was over a thousand and we exceeded the goal. But there was a lot of effort, especially by uh some folks, to really go out and um um stand at Shaw's and go to events and talk to people and have people look at you and go, no, I'm not interested, I'm not buying and.
Yes.
Our chairs is in sales and well, well cut out for the job.
Who's the chair?
Charlie Hartford?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
He had stunned, he did an amazing job of spearheading a lot of the meetings out out of the box for at the community center at various locations in his neighborhood and getting other people to do it, so. Because of him, I think we had some great data to put into the plan so that we can move forward to decide where we're going.
It's great, I totally look forward to it.
That's very impressive when you consider the housing action plan got two hundred in the community. Uh, the climate action plan got three hundred and nineteen or whatever it was, but yeah, so that's.
Well, for the past few months, it was hard to come across Charlie and not get asked, so what's your opinion?
He keeps my monthly office hours every month and everyone who walked in, he was like, have you taken the survey, have you?
Right.
Wow, good, that's great.
It also helped that our our um consultant, I think, really held our feet to the fire and said, you know, this is your opportunity.
Yeah, she seemed really good.
Yeah, I'm I'm very impressed with the whole team from them, but.
Yeah, she's great.
A lot of the preparatory work they did, the uh existing conditions document they've developed and everything. I, I'm glad that they did it, because I can't see a bunch of volunteers trying to do that and what they came up with was extraordinary.
Excellent.
And that's the comprehensive plan?
Well, thank you, that's a great explanation, update, I appreciate it. I will.
I move to a turn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.